Good evening, welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting of January 16th, 2018. We welcome those of you who had been with us earlier this evening as we had the distinct pleasure of appointing three new administrators to our, to our middle schools and high schools. Thrilled very much to have such a high caliber individuals. Now that the celebratory activities are all over with, we're going to get down to some, some deeper discussion. This is, as I said, a committee of the whole meeting, and by that, what you can expect is a lot of discussion on the items that are being brought before the board this evening. However, we will not be voting on any items. Any voting that would be necessary to move these items forward would take place at next Monday's meeting. So if you're looking for voting, you can tune in next Monday. If you're looking for a lot of discussion and ins and outs on these things, then you've, you've come to the right place. If you are here in our audience, we had quite a full room a few minutes ago for our appointments, not quite so full now. Our agendas are right outside the door. They can also be found on our website if you're watching from home. That's at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to our agendas and follow along with us this evening. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Would anybody like to participate in Audience Communications this evening? Seeing none, we'll move along. The next item on our agenda is our Committee of the Whole, and Item 2A is Board Positions. This is the time of the year when the Board nominates officers from within our group of seven. That voting would take place next week, and we had some preliminary discussion at our last meeting, at our study session. We'd like to continue that discussion this evening in terms of officers for the Board. The officers that we do elect from amongst ourselves are President, Vice President, and Secretary. Thankfully, someone many decades before this group had the wisdom to take the treasurer position and put that into policy, that that is taken care of by one of our administrators, in this case Allison Smith, and we are grateful for her, for her good work. That is not on, on the Board's duties. We'll discuss our officers briefly, and then see if our, our thoughts are the same as they were a week or so ago. We will also discuss our Committee Chair positions, and see if you've had any time to, to think any more about that, and, and again, go over where each person's interests lie. The officer positions are voted upon by the Board. The Committee Chair positions are appointed by the President following the President's election next week. But we do try as, as much as we can to honor the wishes of those who wish to serve in, in one committee or another. We're going to open discussion up with the discussion of President for next year. I would like to let it be known and thank the Board very, very much for what I truly believe has been my honor to serve as President of this Board for the past three years. It, it, most of the time, it has been a thrill. Sometimes it's, it's, it's a little difficult, but most of the time, it's, it has been my joy to serve as, as President, and it has absolutely been my honor to serve and lead such a distinguished group of individuals. It is absolutely wonderful to serve with this group of people who care so deeply about our school district. As I said, I've, I've enjoyed my, my service as President very, very much. However, I also believe that it's not healthy for a Board for any one person to stay in that position for an extended period of time. Therefore, I will be suggesting, and I will be planning on nominating Mark Johnson as our President for next year. Mark has served in that role in the past. He's done extremely well. I've led, he, he led rather, and I followed his footsteps for, for my duration, and, and, and the footsteps of Linda Sheal and other fine individuals who have come before this group. We each absolutely stand on the shoulders of those who came before us. I believe that Mark has done a terrific job in the past, and we could utilize his leadership skills, and I would very much like to see him in that role. Would you accept that kind of position, Mark?
Yes, I would. I appreciate the, the kind words as well.
Are there other thoughts on the presidency by any Board members, or Mark or anybody else in, in that role? Mrs. Bonfield.
As the President is the spokesperson for our group, I think Mr. Johnson presents himself very well, and is a great representative to lead our group and be that spokesperson.
Any other comments? Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you. I agree. I think Mr. Johnson would do a great job as the role of the President, and since he has had some prior experience in that role, I think that that's a good spot for him, and I think he would serve, serve our Board well as a President.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I believe that Mr. Johnson has the respect of all of us at the table, and would do a fine job as President.
Yeah, I just want to concur with everyone else's remarks. I've been on the Board while Mark's been President. He did a very nice job, so I'm sure he'll do a very nice job again.
I think our community is, very blessed to have two people who are so willing and capable to do it. So thank you both very much for your service, and for Mark, you willing to be able to take us forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, as we said, with this or any other item, we will be voting on these next week. So we'll, we'll go on with our discussion of Vice President. Are there thoughts on Vice Presidency? Mrs. Bonfield.
I think you, Mr., President Burton would move very nicely into the Vice President's position. So next Monday, I hope that we see you nominated, and hope that you accept.
Thank you. If, if that's where the Board would like me to serve, I would be happy to do so.
I too would like to see you, President Burton, in the position of the Vice President role. I think that's a good fit coming off of your role, and if Mark wasn't able to serve, you certainly would be able to step in and do that, and we need really strong leadership, and all of us are good leaders, but I think it takes a special person to be in either of those spots, and I think both of you have those qualities. So I would also think that you would do a great job in the Vice President role.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. I, I concur with that. I think it's important to have somebody with even some past leadership experience to be in that position, because that is the, the stepping stone if some, if for some reason I'm not here, or I could not serve. And she's got a lot of that background, so.
Any other comments, or anybody else interested in the position? We will move on to the Secretary. Are there thoughts on the Secretary position?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
I had indicated at, at the last meeting that, that Mrs. Bonfield has had some experience in that role, and I think it would be good for her to, to step back into that position. She would not take much to learn. She's, she's done that before, and I think that would be a, a good spot for her.
Okay, sounds good. Other comments on, from Board members on the Secretary position? I know Mrs. Bonfield has done a terrific job in that role. That, that also is another role that takes a specific skill set, and you need to be able to multitask and not only be an active participant in that, in the meetings, but keep good notes of what's going on in the meetings, and, and be able to juggle your Board member hat with that of, of taking care of the voting. And Mr. Centers, you have done a superb job in that role for the past year. It's, and we're blessed to have folks who can, who have different talents in different areas, but this is definitely one that takes a unique set of skills also. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to, we will vote on these roles next week. Even our conversation tonight is, is definitely not set in stone. These are just our thoughts at this point. We will vote on these positions next week, so be prepared to have discussion about that at that time. As far as committee positions, we began our discussions last week about committee chairs. What I may do to, is go just right down the line and, and ask each person what committees they might be interested in serving on, or if they feel that there are any that are not necessarily their strong suit. We began this discussion last week. There are a number of folks, and probably seven of, of seven, who, who have said, we'd be happy to serve in whichever, whichever role the Board would have us to serve in, which is, is honorable. And I believe that we have folks who mean that from the bottom of their heart, which is, which is terrific. We would also like to know, though, if you have a particular interest, or, or a particular background or skill set, because we do have six committee positions. The President will not serve as a Committee Chair, because he or she has got their hands full already. But we would like to know if there are areas that you would particularly like to serve in, or any areas that you would, would care not to serve in. There's, there's a, a line of logic on both ends of that. Either you've served in that role for the past year or two, and therefore you'd like a change, or you've served in that role perhaps for the last year or two, so you'd like to continue doing so. Either way is, is perfectly fine. Again, the following positions that we'll go over are appointed by the President after their election, within the next, the week or two following. But if we could get your thoughts on preferences, we'll try to match those, I'm sure, as closely as possible. Mrs. Bradford, we'll start with you, and we'll just go right around.
I always get to start. Okay, fine. I'm happy to serve in any position, or any committee, on any committee. I, right, currently, I serve on the Curriculum Committee, and I know Liz expressed an interest in the Curriculum Committee, and I'd be happy to switch with her. She does Legislative. If that were the case, I'd be happy to do a switch with her, no problem. The only committee I probably am not quite ready for would be the Finance Committee. I'm still learning about the finances of this fine district, and I think I could use another year or so just to get some more, gather some more financial information. Nothing against you, Allison. So, yeah, so I would be willing to serve on any, really any of the committees.
Okay, sounds great. Mrs. Frank, do you have preferences?
I do not really. I, I'm happy to turn over a policy to you, if you would, last meeting, I think you mentioned that you liked policy. So I'm happy to turn that over and to try something else this year.
Okay. Mr. Centers.
Mark, I'll serve wherever you see fit.
As far as my preferences, I really, I do like policy. I've, I've worked in that area before, and I, I really do enjoy that. Some think, people think I'm crazy, but it's, it is interesting to me. And like my colleagues, I'm happy to serve in whichever committee is needed, but that's a preference of mine, an interest of mine. I think that we can probably see it over you. Yeah. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I've already served as Legislative and as Finance Chair, and they were fascinating, and I would love to try something different. I do have an interesting curriculum. However, I will be happy to serve in any way that the President sees fit to put me to use.
And I'm sorry, you said you had already chaired Finance and Legislative, correct?
Yes, Finance and Legislative.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bonfield.
I'm currently on Finance. I would be more than happy to remain on that committee, since it's my thing. I would prefer not to be on Legislative. I just, I don't have the time right now to be able to give that committee justice, and I think there's a lot of really important things that need to be kept up with on that committee. And I, I know Mark has, Mr. Johnson is a tough act to follow with building in sight, and I know that one has kind of gotten, nobody's talked about that one so much. So, again, I would serve in any capacity. I would, you know, my first pick would be Finance, but I'm, I'm game for anything, except Legislative.
Sounds good. By design, a Board of Education is seven individuals from the community with varied backgrounds and experiences and strengths, and I think we can see that playing out here. We, we do have a variety of skill sets at this table, and we're very blessed to be able to utilize them as best we can for our district. So, alrighty, we will, folks can tune in next week, and we find, we can finalize some of these and go on from there. The next item on our agenda this evening is Item 3, Curriculum Committee, and I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we have one item on our agenda. It is limited schools of choice for 2018, 2019, and our presenters tonight are Kate McDonald and Cindy Scott. Welcome to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ed.
You're welcome.
For the past four years, the Livonia Public Schools has participated in a school of choice program for out-of-district students. The program is defined as a 105 and a 105C. 105 students are those who are within Wayne County, and 105C students are in the contiguous counties. That would be Macomb, Monroe, Washtenaw, and Oakland Counties. Through this program, we have to specify at least one of the following: the grade level, school, or program for which the openings are available. And then when we have more applicants than the available seats or openings, we run a lottery program. We do publicize the date so that the parents and students can attend. Prior to going through the lottery program, we would go through and poll students that have siblings currently attending Livonia Public Schools. Those students would get first priority, and then we run the lottery program from there. The responsibility for transportation is solely on the parent. We do not provide transportation for any out-of-district student. And for the 18, 19 school year, we are recommending seats at the following numbers: kindergarten, 30 seats; first grade, second grade, third grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade, 15 seats; fourth grade, 20 seats; seventh and eighth grade, 18 seats; and then global education and Kappa, both at ninth grade levels, five seats in each of those programs. This gives us a total of 171 seats, where if filled, would bring revenue in the neighborhood of 1.368 million. Typically, though, we wouldn't see a full fill rate, for reasons we may not get 20 applicants in a particular grade level, or all those grade levels may not accept, because some families may have gotten split, where they, a couple kids got in, one did not. So, at an 82%, which was been the average over the last couple of years, that would still generate revenue for around 1.12 million dollars. We do have to define a 30-day window for which to run this program or accept applications. We would do that from February 28th through March 29th. We would publicize or market the program through social, social media, our website, and any other traditional methods of marketing that we, we would like to use.
Are there any questions? Miss, President Burton.
And you did say that the students who have siblings who are currently in the Livonia Public Schools would get first priority?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, they must be currently attending a Livonia Public School.
Okay, and something we discussed in our study session, too. We would have, we are designating the, the number of spots in each grade, but we talked about the fact that if we got, say, one over that, or two over that, you could come back to the Board and ask for approval to take all of the applicants in that given grade, not across the Board, but in each grade, then?
In each grade.
Okay. But what we cannot do is, say, we, we have 10 spots, we got 20, we can't decide to go to 15?
Correct.
So we either take the, the number that we're designating right now, or the entire group that apply for that age group, or for that, for that grade rather, or program.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Mr. McDonald, we show 15 spots for 1 through 3, and 5 and 6, but 20 in grade 4. Can you just explain the, the difference?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, when we determine the amount of spots, we look across the district at what our average seat count is in a particular grade level. And 4th grade is our, one of our lowest, is our lowest cohort of students right now, so we're trying to, we could try to build that grade up, grade level up through this. In addition, they have some lower seat count numbers in the districts, so we have more room and more flexibility to put students.
And when you say in 4th grade, we're talking about 4th grade?
Yes, yes.
The current 3rd grade, so the 4th grade for next year.
I'm already next year.
So it's the current 3rd grade, yeah.
Mr. Centers?
So I think, if I remember correctly, this is our 4th year doing this?
We are currently in our 4th year. This, next year will be our 5th.
Yeah. So, long-term trends, how are the students that have come to us the last few years, how are they doing? Has the transition's gone well? Just give us a quick synopsis for, for people that are listening and maybe aren't real familiar with the school of choice.
Sure, transition has gone well. If you would ask principals, even teachers, who, who are your school of choice kids? Most of them would not know unless they looked, looked up their addresses in, in, in the demographic information. They fit right in. They're, you know, part of our school community. Once they're here, they're, I mean, we, we see them as a Livonia Public School student, and they see themselves as a Livonia Public School student.
Great, good to hear.
Mrs. Jarvis, thank you. Mr. McDonald, would you please tell our listeners how these students will grow in their academic career, in terms of what schools they'll progress to for middle school, high school, and so on?
It's actually a great segue to what I just said. Once we, once we accept them as one of our school of choice students, that we accepted them as a Livonia Public School student. In so doing, once they're placed in a school, in, in most cases, in elementary school here, we basically see them as living next door to that school, as part of that school's boundary area, and then they would therefore follow through with the normal triad process with, for that school. So if they were placed at, throw me a school, Cleveland, they would then go through Cooper, and then through Emerson, and then through Franklin.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Burton.
The other thing that we discussed in our study session that the public may, may be interested in is, do we have room for our current students if there's a desire for any, anyone to transfer? I know it's not very common, but am I correct in, in my assumption that we are taking our inter-district school, school of choice transfers first?
Correct.
And that's if the building that they are desiring to go to has space available?
Correct. That is, both, both of those statements are correct. We do act on our in-district school of choice transfer request first, and then followed by the school of, the out-of-district school of choice.
Okay. And this is, the numbers that you're recommending to us, that allows for move-ins also, correct? I mean, it's not taking any, anyone up to absolute capacity?
Correct, absolutely not. No, yeah, you're absolutely right in that. I mean, we anticipate that we're not going to retain 100% of the current students we have, that we're going to see some kids potentially move out, but we're also going to expect that we're going to see some kids move in, hopefully more moving in. But we aren't pushing any of these seat numbers or, or, you know, class sizes to a maximum.
Okay.
Mr. McDonald, can you talk about the five spots each in Global and in the Kappa program? In order to, for a student to come into the 9th grade, they would have to meet certain requirements, correct?
That's absolutely correct. So, in both cases, there are certain requirements that you have to have in those programs. So, once we go through the application process and we determine who the first five in would be, they would then, before we would even register them, they, we have to check that, one, for Global, that they're meeting the academic requirements that we have set forth for that program, and then if they do not, we do not need to accept them. Very similar to, right now, we do ACAT, NIGI, ERO. So we have certain requirements within those programs as well. And that program, those programs runs very similarly to the same thing with IB, so that, in that regard. Kappa's a little different in that it's not necessarily an academic standard that we're looking on in paper pencil tests type things, but we're looking for an audition. So they would have to go through a tryout. They would use the same scoring rubric that we would use with any student coming in to try out for that program within a particular strand, and then they would have to meet those qualifications as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Bonfield.
Can you talk just a moment about the finances involved? I know you talked about additional revenue, and just the, what are thought processes, the additional costs, having them or not having them, and, and how we determine, I guess, you know, additional teachers and stuff like that?
Yep, absolutely. So when we make our recommendations, we do so without increasing our staffing, and that's one of, that's one of the reasons we have. I mean, there, we could potentially say 100 to you, but that would then cause us to maybe have to hire two or three teachers to accommodate those 100. Within this, we're making recommendations that are within our current staffing levels, knowing when we roll up these, these students into the next grade level, and we can see for, for shadow what we're going to have within a particular grade. And we fit these, we're able to fit these students in without exceeding those, those seat caps, or, or those seat counts that we normally, or student-teacher ratios that we, we don't want to get to. So, in that regard, there is no additional expenses. It's all then looked at as revenue. Again, if it was all, every one of these 171 spots was, were filled, we're looking at a, over 1.35 million. I don't anticipate, I would love to see it, but if you're actually an honest opinion, I don't know that we would see that type of percentage. Conservatively, I think 82%. Looking back over the last few years, as, we're kind of had similar seats available, and what we have as far as applicants, and our ability to retain those applicants, once they have expressed interest in the Livonia Public Schools, it still gives us revenue in the neighborhood of 1.1 million.
Mrs. Oakley.
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just wanted to.
That's okay. You have privilege.
I had a couple of comments. So, I appreciate Mr. McDonald and Mrs. Scott's work on this, and just, I just want to add on a bit to both of your questions, because I think that's a, a very appropriate question that a parent may have if they're listening to this, and they're saying, okay, 15 first graders, what does that mean for my current kindergartner that's going into first grade? So, if we think about that, we've got 10 K4 elementary schools for whom this would be, this would apply. So it wouldn't apply to Webster, and it would not apply to Nigieiro. They have their own process. So if we take our other 10 K4 schools, and you're talking about 15 seats, you're talking about one, perhaps two, students across the first grades in those schools. In first grade, I believe we have, I think somewhere around 36 or 37 sections right now, meaning at a school, there might be three sections of first grade. So, of 36 or 37 sections, we're talking about 15 students. So in less than half of the sections next year, we may add one student to that class. And so when we take a look at that, when Mr. McDonald talked about it being within our existing staffing ratio, we may have, quite frankly, as we look at that, if we kept the same number of teachers, and we looked at the number of students that would be rolling up, we could potentially suggest taking 70 students at first grade. We're not. We're suggesting 15. And so we're suggesting, quite frankly, a very conservative number. And part of this really, and it started five years ago, and it continues now, it really is to mitigate the enrollment decline that we've seen over the number of years. Thankfully, we're not seeing it at the rate that we have. However, we still are in a declining enrollment state. We also still have larger graduating classes than we have kindergarten cohorts coming in. And until that begins to balance out a little bit more, we start out with a, in the negative. And so what we do is offer some of these opportunities as a way to bring in revenue that really helps preserve programs for the 14,500 students currently with Livonia Public Schools, in addition to the youngsters joining us. So, one of the things we have found is, is great benefit in utilizing our current staffing without overcrowding classes in any way, shape, or form. In fact, when placements are carefully made by both Mrs. Scott and Mr. McDonald, they, again, will not bring those classes to the max. There will still be a cushion of a number of seats for move-in students. And so the recommendations may take all of that into account. So I want to assure not only the Board, but the community, because that's certainly a question I, I would think parents- question I would think parents may have. And so we want to assure both you and the community that that's been looked at very carefully across each grade level, in each section at each grade level. And so, again, I think this board has always been desirous of really only considering a limited schools of choice option, and when we look at a district our size, when we're talking between 100 and 200 kids, that's still a relatively small number overall. But what it really can help do is help, again, stabilize our enrollment and continue to provide that cushion for us, hopefully, over the next few years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Jarvis, thank you. Mrs. Oakley, yes. What do our enrollment numbers look like this year compared to our projections?
We are down more than we expected. So we were down in the neighborhood of about 155 students this year, again, as we finalized our numbers, both between our current count as well as our shared time count. And so we've seen that number decline as we've had some of our parochial private schools close as well. And so, that was, we had projected, I believe, was it 90, Mrs. Smith?
Just under that, I believe 75.
Okay, for this year. And so we, we're taking a look at where those grade levels are, and that's what, part of where the recommendation is coming, is where we can fill some of those gaps, so we can start to even out our cohorts a bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Branford. Mr. McDonald, once we take in the students of school of choice, and I realize we've only been doing it for four years now, do we keep track at all of the retention of those students in terms of, are all of them still with us? Do some of them leave? Do we know those?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I know, in order to look into that, we would have to go through each individual record for a student and pull. So as they came in, we would have to go back to our original registrations, because, again, once they come here, they become one of our students. So if I pulled a who has left, that student would just fill into that report. So we'd literally have to go through one student at a time to see, not something that...
It's not something that you do?
It's not something that we've never normally have done.
But I can tell you, last year, when I was looking at it, there were quite a few students who was really trying to dig in, that had, they had decided to move into our community. So they were no longer, so you couldn't even pull them out by that. You had to literally know their name, search them out, and say, oh, they just moved, you know, next door to Kennedy, you know? So now they truly are Levonia Public Schools, living within our area, not just as a school of choice.
And that's not uncommon in district transfer requests that we get, is that a family has moved in, but they became, they started with us as an out-of-district school of choice for this program, maybe they were going to, you know, Cleveland, and now they're in the Rosedale area, and they're asking to stay at Cleveland because they've already done three years there and they want to finish up. So that's not uncommon in district transfer requests we get.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so this will be put on the agenda for next week. Okay? That concludes the parochial program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item four, Finance Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you. We have one item on our agenda tonight, and that is our budget amendment timeline. Mrs. Smith will help us out with that.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to discuss with the board and the community a proposed timeline for budget amendments and financial updates. I continually monitor our budget and compare that with our actual collection of revenues and the expenditure of funds. I know it's the board's desire to stay abreast of the financial or fiscal condition of the district, and to be aware of the needs in the district, so that they can properly consider the budget recommendations that come before you for adoption. It's with that in mind that I put together this recommended timeline. I also wanted to mention, before we go over the timeline, that I did a poll of the Wayne County School Business officials, the business managers, to find out from them the frequency that they bring formal budget amendments before their board. And by far, the majority of school districts do one amendment either in December or January, and then another formal, final amendment in June. And I think we can all agree that looking at the budget only in June, and then either December and January, just isn't enough. And it's for that reason that I recommend that we look at the budget and how we're doing compared to the budget on a quarterly basis. So that would take the form of a proposed budget in June that would come to the board for adoption. That's our, currently happening. What I'm proposing, we add, is a formal financial update in October that'll go in tandem with our audit report when we're doing that. And then in December, we would adopt our first amended budget. That would be another detailed book, similar to what we see in June. And by December, we have some good numbers that will impact the budget. For instance, our student count has been finalized by December. We typically have our staffing in place for the school year, so we know what our contracts are going to be. And with those two being the biggest drivers, student count for our revenue and the salaries for our staff for expenditures, we can have a very good idea in December what our actual needs are and what recommendation we have for the board. After that, we would do another formal financial update in March, and, again, we'd have any updates that may have happened since December. You know, if there's staffing changes, anything like that, you know, we would bring that to you at that time. And then we would follow up with another formal budget amendment in June, another detailed budget book. And this would be something new, so I'm recommending that we try this for the remainder of the school year and see how comfortable the board is, if that seems to be meeting the needs of the board, as well as the community, and then having another discussion to see if we want to continue with that for the 2018-19 school year.
Questions? Mrs. Frank?
Can you just tell me, remind me, what is different than what we're currently doing? How many less, I know that this is a decrease, but what are we currently doing?
So we are currently doing, we currently adopt the proposed budget in June, and then we do normally an amendment in December and then one in March, and then we do a final amendment in June. So what this would be, would be, in lieu of the amendment in March, we'd be adding two formal budget updates or finance updates, one in October and then one in March. And I would like to stress to the board and the community that if items come up that are going to be impactful of our budget, we won't wait for the quarter to bring those to the board. We want to keep you abreast of what's happening, so that you're always knowledgeable of what's happening in the district and what changes are going to be coming to you as part of those financial updates or as part of those formal budget amendments.
Mrs. Burton, President Burton?
I appreciate the work that you've done in putting this together, and it sounds, I was one that was concerned at first, but the more I hear of your plans with this, the more comfortable I am with it. I appreciate that we'll give it a year's run-through and see how it goes and see if it works for everyone. But knowing a little bit more detail about what you're planning on putting in the financial update in March and in October makes a lot of sense, because those seem to be the types of things that we're really looking for when we're approving the amended budget. You know, what are the bigger impactful line items that are causing a movement in that budget, either up or down? So knowing that those items are coming before the board, even in the form of a financial update, it sounds like it should be sufficient. Some of you live and breathe these numbers every single day, but as a board, we don't. So it's important to me that we keep these numbers in front of us, because we don't take lightly the fact that we have to vote on these budgets, and I agree with you, seeing them on a limited number of times per year is not healthy. But knowing that it may actually even be better having a financial update, as you've described, in October and March, than having a full-blown budget amendment, because we could spend more time on the budget pieces that are actually moving, rather than every single item in the budget.
I completely agree, that's the hope, so.
That's the whole point, right?
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. First of all, Mrs. Smith, thank you for all the work you and your staff put into giving us these updates. I don't think we could operate without them. Question I have, is, are we, is it dictated by state law as to how many amendments we have to have during the school year?
What's required by law is to have a proposed budget in place by June, and it's actually my understanding that you don't actually have to do any formal amendments. We would be required by law to do an amendment if our expenditures were going to exceed what was appropriated by the board, but other than that, I know it's pretty, I was kind of surprised, some of my colleagues too, had mentioned that in their districts, they do the proposed budget in June, and then they won't do another formal amendment until the following June, they'll do a final amendment. So they do a proposed budget and then a final amendment, so. And potentially, maybe, I think maybe in a smaller district where you don't have as many moving parts, that could be, you know, adequate. But with us being such a big district, with so many buildings, and, you know, the building and site needs that we have, and, you know, the staffing and everything, it definitely seems like that wouldn't be enough for us.
Well, in addition with all of this, it also helps with our transparency, to bring that out, and so that the community can see where we are as we go through the year, and not only have to see it once a year and say, hey, what's going on? So, we appreciate that as well.
Yeah. The hope too, and with the budgets too, and seeing them so frequently, and doing the amendments that, when we do, I can't imagine, you know, waiting till June and then potentially, you know, the swings that we would see, and that by monitoring them throughout the years, we won't have those big fluxes, so.
And these financial updates would be in our board packets, and they would be online, correct? So if anyone in the community wanted to see, drill down and see the detail, all of these financial updates are still going to be online in our board packets, so people have access to that as well. Correct. And really, quite frankly, Mrs. Frank, the updates, which are also part of the budget amendments, those are just the summary pages, are probably most impactful for the community to understand. It clearly lays out the fund balance and where that is at that time, where we were previously, and where we project to be. It would lay out any changes in expenditure and changes in revenue with rationale for why those changes were made, and then an overall update to the budget. And as we look at something like the detailed board book versus that summary information, all of that board book goes into compiling that summary, but perhaps each individual smaller budget, whether it's a scholarship fund or a food service fund, et cetera, there's generally not a tremendous amount of fluctuation in those individual pieces. And really, I think what folks are looking for are the bottom line. Are we staying within our proposed and adopted budget? If not, why not? Did the revenues come in as expected? And where is the district's fund balance? As community members, those are generally the most pressing questions that folks have. And again, we also will have multiple formal amendments and opportunities to take a look at the budget, but I think adding that update in October will be of benefit as well.
Right, perfect, great. President Burton?
One item that recently hit the news, and definitely we've sent out communications to our employees, because it affects most of them, if they worked for us within the last few years, is the return of the 3% that had been withheld, which is a boom for our employees. But budget-wise, it's a good thing that we have a fund balance, and one of the reasons that we do is because we do periodically have hits to our budget mid-year that are completely outside of our control. And do I understand correctly that, while it's wonderful for our employees, it is also going to cost the school district a little over $400,000 to take care of the taxes involved in the return of this money that has been in escrow for our employees?
President Burton, that is a perfect lead-in. I have two financial items to formally update the board on too, and I know we've discussed this before. One being what you were just referencing, we will be receiving about $6.1 million from the Office of Retirement Services that we'll be refunding to our, some current employees and past former employees. Total, 2,400 individuals, 1,400 active employees, and 1,000 inactive employees. And with that comes the need to make a FICA payment, and we're estimating that's going to be about $470,000. We were advised during the period when these deductions were withheld, between 2010 and 2012, to treat them as FICA exempt. So therefore, at that time, we did not pay the IRS FICA. And so now that we are refunding these deductions to the employees, we will now need to pay a FICA on that. So that is an additional cost to the district that was not included in our proposed budget, nor the first amended budget that we adopted in December, but what will be included in our next formal budget amendment. Along with that, hit to the general fund and expenditures. I am happy to report that we also do have, we've just been notified by Wayne RISA, we have some one-time special education transportation revenue coming in of $770,000. So, the timing of that is excellent, you know, with the news that we have this new expenditure. We also have some additional revenue that we'll be able to recognize in our next budget amendment as well.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Smith, for mentioning that. So just to, just to be sure that folks understand, the $6.1 million coming in is not revenue for the general fund, so that is money that is coming in from the Office of Retirement Services, and all of those funds will be paid back out to the 2,400 employees based on the contributions that they made from their pay during that time between July of 2010 and September of 2012. The FICA payment will not come out of the $6.1 million. And so that was, just to clarify that, in case anyone was listening, or in case there was not clarification on that, so that money is what was withheld, and that same amount will go back. So that, we are the flow-through for that to our staff, so that will not be coming into general fund. We will be required to pay the FICA out of general fund. So again, it is one of those reasons why we are so grateful that the fiscal stability that everyone has worked so hard to achieve is present, because for some districts, taking that kind of hit at this point in the year, you would be needing to look at making, you know, budget changes and perhaps even staffing changes. And so, we're pleased to have a fund balance that will allow us to pay out that FICA payment. And we are also pleased for the continued support of Wayne County RISA, as they took a look at their Act 18 budget and found that they were able to provide additional support for the transportation costs, for our special education transportation costs for districts across Wayne County, so.
President Burton?
Mrs. Oakley, or Mrs. Smith, can you address, for the benefit of the public, the special education costs and how this $700,000 will help, but it does not cover all of our special education costs?
I'd be happy to speak to that. We track in our software the costs that are incurred for transferring our special needs students, and part of our process too, in the fall, is to submit those costs to the state, and we get a partial reimbursement from the state for those additional costs. And what this payment does is reimburses the district for the portion that wasn't refunded by the state, or there's a per pupil dollar amount, and I want to say it's about $1,300 a student. And it's $1,300 a student times the number of special ed students that take transportation from the district, and it's the lesser of those two payments. So, this is in an effort to help us cover the costs that the district does incur. We are legally required to provide transportation to our special ed students, so this is a help for costs that we've already had to incur, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to toss in, I'm going to skip back to the financial update timeline. We got, kind of went down the road. Can we change the title to that, just to the financial update timeline?
Sure, of course.
For me, I really, I would rather have more financial updates, which this is providing, and so I think that that's a great benefit to us. I know if, during those financial updates, that if we have any questions or need any detail, that we can always ask, and that will be provided. And I think we focus a lot on the amendment portion of the budget, but the budget amendments are really just byproducts of the financial update. So, the meat of the whole thing is the financial updates. And for me personally, I would prefer to see the higher-level reports more often and free up your time, because I know those board packets, for the financial, for the amendment packets, take a lot of time and effort. packets, take a lot of time and effort, a lot of paper and different things. So, for me, I would much, and then much rather have the, the higher level budget review, finances allow us to talk about it, and then also allow us to ask questions. And as you always do, if there's an additional item that pops up, I am very confident that you'll bring it to the board and, and talk about it right away and, I guess, assure the board that just because we have this timeline, this is a formal, this, these are formal update timelines, it doesn't mean that we're not talking about finances at any other time. I think it's at the top of our list of what we talk about. This is just setting down a guideline for some, for some regular and expected updates. And just like the, the FICA payment that we're gonna incur on these refunds to the employees and former, former employees, that was brought to our attention immediately. And this is actually the second meeting that we've talked about it, I'm sure we'll talk about it at several more meetings, and I appreciate your ongoing attention to detail.
It's my pleasure.
Okay. So, anybody else? Okay. President Burton, that is going to complete the finance committee.
Thank you. We are now on item five, Building and Site Committee, and I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. Shockingly, we have only one item under Building and Site.
Yeah, but it's gonna be a long one.
Mr. Francis, you have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. What a wonderful start off to tonight's meeting with the two assistant principals and the principal. It was very nice to see everybody with their families, et cetera. That was a good time. I want to just start off, we do have the one item, it's the Roofing Design and Quality Control Services. I wanna refer you, before I introduce Mr. Smith, I wanna refer you to my memo, and I had a few bullet points from the, the longer portion of the Plant Moran memo that I pulled out. And what we're doing here this evening is bringing forward to the board a proposal and a recommendation to retain RTA, that's Roofing Technology Associates, that may sound familiar to you, because RTA is the, is the firm, Livonia Firm, that had done the testing on our roofs. So they're fairly intimately knowledgeable of our, of our roofs, they've walked them all, they've been up there, they've, they've cut holes, they've, they've cut bores, they've done some work on them to do the tests that they produced for us with the results of the condition of our roofs. So what we're bringing forward tonight is a recommendation for RTA to actually be doing the design for the project that we would like to propose for the summer of 18 with regard to re-roofing a few buildings. And to also be a type of quality control, as, as we name it. This is similar to something like, for example, Commissioning Agent does for us. NTH is, is our civil engineering firm, they do this for us, they help with the design for items, and then we take that design out to bid after, of course, it's been approved by the board. And when we have a contractor who actually completes the work, then that company, the other examples, and, and in this example, RTA, would be on-site to also ensure that the design is being followed, that the work is being done appropriately and properly, and report back and consult with, with the district. So, that's what we're bringing you, to you tonight. With that, I can let Mr. Scott Smith, who, who you all know from Plant Moran Cressa, owner's rep, discuss a little bit as Plant Moran took the lead in negotiating the contract with RTA.
Thank you very much, Mr. Francis. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just to clarify, this is something that would be part of the sinking fund, this is not a bond recommendation. The roof work that we've been recommending and doing has all been part of the sinking fund and the design work here, and this recommendation would continue to follow suit. We've talked to you guys in the past about, once we got the, the roof assessment evaluations in and really got to understand where the roofs were, and it helped us prioritize, while they all need some level of attention and they're, they're all have some years on them, it helped us prioritize, and we've, we've, this past fall, we came and, we came with a plan to, to really look at Holmes, parts of Franklin, and there were some other areas. What they use is a RCI, or Roofing Condition Index, which indicates the level of concerns or issues within a set area of roof, and, and it translates to a coefficient or the RCI number. So again, we, we've talked before about getting going with Holmes, parts of Franklin, and we've also got in here the Transportation Building, which also graded out rather poorly, as well as a small section of the Warehouse Building, since it's in the neighborhood. Excuse me. Those areas, they're, they're small in nature as well. We're at a point, really, this, this year where we, we don't wanna bite off too much. That was never the plan, we had assumed doing about two and a half million dollars this summer, and we've got a budget and a plan that falls roughly within that, that, that cost. So what we did, we talked to RTA, again, as Mr. Francis said, they've been doing a lot of work in the district, they've been monitoring as well all of the new roofs that have gone on the bond projects at the new additions for the Performing Arts Center at Franklin and Stevenson, as well as the work at Churchill. They did do the roofing assessment, they're our local, very familiar with, with the roofs. It was kind of a hope as well that, you know, that potentially if things had went well, the, the assessment had went well, the team was easy to work with and we liked and were satisfied with the way that they were handling themselves and who we were dealing with, that perhaps we could find some common ground to continue to work with them as we start to take on the larger projects, which involve re-roofing a lot of these roofs over the next several years. So we did meet with RTA, asked them, went over what our expectations would be in terms of what would be required. And again, this is similar to what we've done with NTH, relative to the pavement replacement works, where they are actively out there designing the work, helping us get good bids, putting out the RFPs, helping with interviews, answering questions that during bid time, reviewing submittals from the contractors, and then equally important, being our, the district's eyes and ears when the roofs go in, 'cause they, this is what RTA does, they, they really have, over the years, made a, a business out of roofing specifically, and so they're experts in their field. And they have, are by far the best choice of anybody in the district to oversee that work and make sure that it's done properly, and hopefully will last for years to come. So we did, we sat down with them a couple different times and went over the expectations and ultimately came back with a proposal of $70,000 for the roof, the work associated with these roofs. On a two and a half million dollar budget, that works out to be about 2.8%. As a, as a point of reference, some of the roof, roof assessment work, or not assessment work, but observation work that they've done at the high schools, has been in the neighborhood of like 3.4 to 3.5% on average. So this is a reduction in that, and some of that is attributed to that this is a, a larger magnitude of scope, so there are some efficiencies gained by doing so. We've, we've also put out several other RFPs for roofing, similar type of roofing assess, um, careful, it's a roofing design and construction administration, quality control type of programs, and, and they really have come in probably between three and a quarter, up to maybe four, in some cases, they're over 4%. The scope can change a little bit, but generally, we've been extremely pleased with what they've done, and we're actually, to be honest, thrilled with the, as a, as a form of percentage of the 2.8%, I think it shows a real strong interest from them to continue working with the district. Mr. Francis, Mr. Lau, ourselves have been impressed with what they've done. We think they'll, they're very qualified in what they do and can do a good job getting these going. It would be more of a year-to-year.
Yeah, this is specifically for the summer of 18.
Yep. So what we would, we would enter an initial contract if, if awarded by the board and, and if things went well, we would, we would consider using them again, hopefully at, at or around the 2.8%, depending on what the district chooses to move forward with in future years. And certainly we have the option to bid these services out. It is not required, it is a professional service, so it is something, you know, it's the district's decision, it, it's not, it's different than the actual construction work.
Some of the conversations that we, we've had with, with Plant Moran is that the, the rate that we're getting right now at the 2.8% is falling below what, what Plant Moran has seen in other Metro Detroit school districts, jobs that are similar, they actually crack into threes often. So we, we wanna take this, this proposal and run with it for right now, is, would be the recommendation.
Yes.
One of the other pieces I wanted to point out, and I see some, some of you flipping through the, the packet, and you have a very colorful couple of pages in there. So, one of the items, and we're not, we haven't brought this yet, but just so you know, these are the, the jobs that we are going to work on to propose for the summer of 18 with the sinking fund. So you're looking at just a portion of Franklin High School, and, and you can see it on the map, and it's, it's got the, the.
The web.
Yeah, I don't know what to call that, little cloud bubble around it or whatever. And we're looking at all of the Holmes Middle School, and then all of the Transportation Building, but as you can see, that's a fairly small, less than 8,500 square feet, and then less than 7,000 square foot section of Area B on the Warehouse. So, this is, what we're looking at here is, and the reason we wanna show you it, is this is what we, we would like, if, with the board's approval of this agreement, we would like RTA to design and then help us with getting the bid packs out, and then going through all, all of the rest. So we wanted you to see where that basis of the, the dollar amount, the $70,000, which is a percentage of what we are only estimating right now to be the job, but this is what we're looking at for them to design. So that's why we wanted to include that for you to see where we're going here. So we're in step one, which would be get the, get the company to design for us and engage them in that job, and keep them engaged throughout the process of, the bid process, and, as well as the actual oversight of that, helping with the oversight of that job in the summer. Is there anything that you, that we may wanna add?
No, I think, you know, again, this is a budget. RTA, being in the business, has their idea of what, what they think it is, we have some historical data as well. So what, the agreement we kinda have with them is, your, the fee would be based off of the budget, provided that the actual costs are roughly within 10% of that, and then, and that's a fair number. After this year, we should have a pretty good budget, an idea of what the budget should be moving forward, we can equate it to a cost per square foot, understanding that each school has differences, some may have more roofs on them, there may be more insulation required, et cetera.
Maybe more to tear off.
As, as an example, Holmes too, you know, we're talking about doing the, the fascia panel replacements, which are on the vertical piece that we've been talking about over the years, so there's costs associated with that as well. Some schools may not have that, in some cases there may be other things to consider when replacing those as well.
I have a question on that fa- fascia, is that how you said fascia?
Yes.
Isn't, is that the green part that they, the, the front, that they colored or they painted? I, I'm confused. Didn't they just replace that, that, you know, the front part, that green? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I, I do, I, I don't know if that's the, if, if.
Is that what they're replacing?
Which color that is, there's, it's, it's the panel.
The panels on the front.
They would, they would not have replaced it if we're replacing it with the roof, they may have painted it.
We painted it.
Oh, it's just a painted, so they will replace that.
But it's something that's painted.
Okay, so that will all be replaced, that nice new green that they just painted all around?
Paint's a lot cheaper than, than, I mean, that, there would be.
There's some concerns.
Do you know what I'm saying?
We'll take a look at which section you're talking about.
I'm talking about the big, long, that green.
It's about a four-foot section, and it's directly below the roof.
The green that goes all the way around, that they just, it looks really nice to me, but maybe apparently.
It, it looks nice, but as you get closer, it's older, it's not the fact that it's painted, it's, it's just old and it's, you know, the clock joints are, are starting to fail, there's attachment concerns, we, we literally face-screwed through some of the panels while we were renovating the school to make sure that they were secured safely. It didn't make sense at the time to, to consider them, because we weren't redoing the roof, so you'd be effectually replacing the coping a couple times.
Okay, so that will all be replaced, will that be the same color then? They'll do the same thing?
It's part of the proposal.
Definitely could be, I think that color.
I mean, they'll make it the same way, 'cause I really like the way it looks, I mean, it's aesthetically very nice looking at Holmes. That's why when I, when you look at it when you drive by, I always think, oh, that looks very nice, but.
It does.
You're right, if that all needs replacing, it seems like, it'll, you might have questions from the community about that because of the way, I don't know, I see it, and it looks really good right now.
And I think one of the things we can do is be prepared to, to discuss that when we bring forward the proposal for the actual roofing work.
Okay.
And then, if you can be prepared to answer that question with regard to.
Yeah, you might want to, because I.
Are they able to match that same, that same panel?
Okay.
I, I just wanna say that, that's actually really wonderful to hear, because the fact that, that you're saying, it looks really, really nice.
No, it does, I mean.
But that, that's great, that, that, that shows that even though it, we're looking to say, you know, if, if it didn't.
Right.
If it didn't come out, it still looks very nice.
I mean, at least from a distance, a distance it does, I don't climb up there.
But sometimes you, you have a plaster wall that looks nice, but when you go up it, you can, you know, flake it away.
Sure.
So it, it, I equate to that, but it, and I'm happy to hear that, that we're saying that you and the community look at it from a distance and say, it looks very nice, but we're gonna look at it from a, a structural, whether there be, like, like Mr. Smith said, if it has, you know, any issues with leakage or the way that it's been fastened is more of a short-term solution.
Sure.
If it's a longer term and it doesn't need replacement, that, that's one of the things we wanna ask RTA to, to, to get into and design, and then we can bid that out and see where it goes.
Yeah.
But again, I'm, I'm just happy to hear that.
Well, I just.
You think it looks really good.
Community-wise, if a person's driving by there, you know, we just redid them, so they, oh, they were painted, so everybody saw it, looks new, and now if they see it all torn down and being put up again, someone might say, didn't we just do that? Why are we redoing it? So it might be who less to just discuss that.
It's like you can.
From a distance, it looks fine, but closer up.
You can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig.
Correct, correct.
So just to, just for a note, I guess.
Great.
Okay. Mrs. Frank, do you have a question?
I do. Um, so this 2.5, when we have this partial facility list of the budget, that is a estimate based on what they're telling us, so that they could get their numbers, is that true?
It's a professional opinion, that's correct.
This all has to be bid out, or, or we're gonna bid it out, so those are not.
Correct.
That's an estimate.
Correct.
Okay. And then, second.
Again, just, just to jump in, the only thing that we're asking you to consider, and it's, it's related, but is, is the RTA fee to do the design and then also do the, the oversight, the, what, yeah, the part of it, what they will help us with is not only after they design it, but also getting it to bid, et cetera, doing bid interviews, pre-bid interviews, et cetera.
Can I keep going?
Yes.
And then, um, these fee rates, schedule and professional, that is included in the $70,000, or those are all on top of the $70,000?
These would be à la carte, these are, if you, if we asked them to do some, some outside, some scope that was outside of this agreement, they would, or some, some off assignment, they would probably utilize these rates, you know, on a time and material basis to determine the, the cost. If it was something significant, we'd probably not go this route, and we'd just have a discussion with them and negotiate the services, the fee for those services.
Okay.
But again, I don't foresee anything major for this summer. You know, we've got kind of a tight timeline to, to get the design done, we're hoping the snow starts melting so we can get them on the roof.
It's a jammer, eh?
To do some of their evaluation.
Yes. Just wanted to make sure we weren't paying that and that, no.
Nope.
Only if we ask them to do something else.
Right. And you'll see some different prices per square foot, and I think that goes back to the fact that not every roof is the same. They have different, at Franklin, we're replacing these areas for recommendation because the, the actual membrane is, was observed to start, is starting to break down physically. So you can reuse some of the, the insulation there, as an example, whereas some schools have two roofs on them, by code you're allowed two roofs, so we gotta take, we're gonna take it back down to the structure and rebuild it back up. New energy codes are in place now too, so the roofs will provide a higher level of our, our insulating value, which should yield some energy savings as well. But again, those are, those are all factored into the square foot, and that's, that's why RTA believes that the, the estimates are gonna be in that $15 plus or minus range.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll really, we'll get a good idea what it is after, once, once the work gets bid out, and how big the roofs are.
This is not the, as, maybe as fun as picking tile and, and paint for the, for the classroom walls and getting the, the new technology, but this is absolutely necessary, and it's one of those things that can more realistically be related to, to your community house homeowner, whereas they may not, you know, have short throes and, and, you know, classrooms, we've all got a roof, you know, generally speaking, one way or another, and, and when it starts to break down, it can cause multiple problems as you start to leak or lose energy. So this is something that, in a very derky way, that, that we're excited about, to, to start on.
One more question. And then, for Franklin, well, maybe, for Franklin, or just any. One more question. And then for Franklin, well, maybe, for Franklin, or just any of them, like Karen said, are we fairly confident, I know we have lots of work to do, and we only can do so many this summer, but are we going to have to go back to Franklin in six months to, I mean, I know...
Not six months, but...
We will to replace other parts.
The second question is, when will we get to the next round of roofs? Is that only a summer job? It will have to be summer of nineteen? It will, it's not spring break, or, I mean, this is, that's a summer? So it's a whole year?
Well, it'd be a summer.
Okay. So just for my, because I don't know, is it better to do four different buildings than one whole building? Because we're going to have to come back, I mean, do you know what I'm saying? Like, if we are taking off pieces of it, is it more expensive to do it piecemeal than to do one whole building as opposed to four separate buildings?
I think the intent would generally, because the roofs generally were put on at the same time, the intent would be to try and replace the entire school based on the needs. You get into some of the larger schools, like the high schools, there may be a section, if it's showing up as having a much, a lot of disparity between the conditions, we may give some consideration. And that's something we'll plan for next year is, what do we want to tackle next? The reason we're really focusing on the warehouse and transportation is, we can't bite off too much more this summer based on where we're at, and there are small pieces that have a need, and they made logical sense to include, as Mr. Francis said, they're really a small percentage of the overall scope. And the reason we're doing the warehouse is because we're doing transportation, and the fact that you've got eighty percent of the roof in really good shape, and we've got a small percent that's in bad repair, we should, we should look to replace that.
Okay.
I think as we move forward, we'll see that the high schools are the ones that we're going to take in pieces, simply because of the size of them. But something like Holmes, where even though that, if you look at it, you see a whole bunch that's red and then some that's orange, it's, yeah, exactly. You might as well just go in and take Holmes all as one, because when you start looking at square footage, you can see, you know, all of Holmes is a hundred and ninety thousand square feet. You know, we're talking three times that amount at a high school. It's a much bigger...
Okay.
It's at least a two-summer project if you were to re-roof an entire high school.
So you're going to have to go back. I'm just thinking of saving costs of if you have your whole crew there, it would be more cost-effective to do it once and be done, but it's going to be two summers anyway.
For the high school, it would be. I think the middle schools are, you know, weather permitting, that's a very full summer for a roofing crew to do a high, or a middle school. In fact, if you guys go back to the roofing condition that was, that a weighted average, I would say generally speaking, your middle schools and upper elementary schools have some of the most pressing need in terms of roofs, which, again, they're probably eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet generally in size. The high school's not so bad, a little better. But, you know, it's a relative condition index. It's not an absolute grading scale per se.
And just to clarify to Mrs. Frank, if I'm understanding this correctly, and please correct me if that, if this is not, as you, as we take a look at this, and we'll go, they will go into this in more detail when we make the actual recommendations for which roofs or which portions of roofs to repair, but we also see that there are different, there's a different status level for many areas of the roof. And so there might still be a considerable amount of life left on a particular portion of a roof at a high school, let's say, because that portion may have been repaired six years ago. And so part of it is also making that determination, is that more of a cost savings than to allow that to live its useful life and then come back and complete what needs to be done? Right now, and again, that, that scale that Mr. Smith referred to really helped guide where we needed to start. They were truly the most critical areas. So for the most part, you know, two of the projects it looks like would be complete areas, the warehouse and Holmes, and then two of them would be partial. And again, that's based on the condition of the current roof. But that will be determined on a case-by-case basis. So it's, it's a really good question, because it makes sense if the crew's out there, if the materials are out there, why aren't we doing that? And part of it really is, if some of it truly has a considerable amount of life left, we want to be able to preserve our funds to get to the most critical areas. So in some cases, we may do some, some areas in the next couple of years that probably had a couple more, couple of additional years, but it may be just cost prohibitive to go back to a smaller site twice. So we'll look at that on a case-by-case basis, but that's certainly something that the board can look at and give us feedback on as we look to make recommendations, not just this summer. You will probably see this for the next five to six summers. And so oftentimes, we've had some of those exact same conversations with parking lots.
Yeah.
So those are really good questions to say, okay, why aren't we doing this portion? And you think, well, that probably has four or five more years. Sometimes it makes sense to go ahead and do it all because of other infrastructure work that you're doing, but many times we'll say, let's preserve that and just do this. So it's a great question.
She said what I was talking about. We're going to see this one, this is going to become a topic year after year. And if you look at going back to high schools being larger, you can see that we're going back to Franklin again this summer. We're going back to Stevenson again this summer for parking lots, because we took them in, in blocks. So that's a pretty good, I think, line to draw between the parking lots and the roofs of the high schools just being so, so large.
Yes, right.
So our roofing needs are very significant, as we talked about. And we can only handle so much at a time. What's a concern level that we may not get to certain areas before they start causing damage? Is that something we're concerned about?
We always have throughout, I shouldn't say we always have, we always are prepared for any conditions that occurred during a season or during a school year, whether it be from wind or different storms, or just a failure that we find, and we will, we certainly go in and make those repairs. There are also some, some thoughts of other areas that we can just go in and sort of nip-tuck a little bit to get a little bit, yeah, to get a little more life out of it. Doing, doing a roof repair, we can do at any time, we can do some maintenance at any time if something occurs, which we've had, you know, in the past school year from wind or whatever, we get a company out there to handle it. We can do that at any point. This, you need to have the students out of the building because it becomes a much larger scope of project and what they're actually doing up there. So to your, to your question, we're prepared for that. We'll do a little bit of cleanup where necessary. We'll fix if something happens due to weather, and we're going to try to do the replacements then, summer after summer, through, via the sinking fund, in a logical order to get to the ones that are the neediest, as much as possible in that order.
And we're anticipating that this number will go up over the next number of years. This will probably be a smaller number compared to...
This is small. I mean, our original conversations were actually to have two more, I think it was, a couple more buildings potentially to do in the summer of eighteen. But the timeframe that we're at, by the time we got the report back that we're getting now to the board with regard to, we need to get it designed, et cetera, and quite frankly, we have a lot of work happening in this district in different areas between bond renovations, paving, and now roofs.
And athletic facilities.
Thank you, athletic facilities. I don't know how I forgot that one. We have a lot of work going on. So we thought it prudent to say, let's hit the neediest of the needy and get, just start getting this rock rolling down the hill and move from there.
Any other questions?
I have one. I just want to make sure I'm clear, and it's sort of a follow-up on Mrs. Frank's question. With regard to the fee, I note in here that if the bids come in within ten percent of, at the budget of two and a half million, we're fine on the fee. But if it comes one side or the other of that ten percent, then they will perhaps adjust that fee. In terms of what we would be voting on, if the bids come in and they're outside of that ten percent higher, that's going to incur a higher fee, are we, is that going to have to come back to us for reevaluation at that time?
I don't...
You know, depending on the dollar amount, we would, first of all, we would certainly bring it back to the board for notification. We'd certainly talk about it in a study session in a committee meeting, and depending on the dollar amount, determine if we needed to bring that for vote. We really should be, that cushion of ten percent either way should really allow us the leeway that's needed. Part of why you have that in there is so that if we have bids, for instance, that came in, you know, twenty percent higher, all of a sudden, the fee that you thought you were voting on of seventy thousand dollars, all of a sudden, you know, becomes much greater. And so depending on what that dollar amount is, would determine if we needed to bring it for a formal vote. We will certainly update you either way where the bids come in, and therefore what their fee will be.
I just wanted to make sure that we were, we didn't, we're not doing this piecemeal that we'd have to come back.
Right.
That actually leads me to, I don't know, question or comment, but this is similar to recently, we've had, this is, this is what usually happens with regard to, we have an estimate, we try to get a professional service, and we're basing that cap sheet and what the board is actually voting on, on this. And we had this conversation not too long ago with another project, where we said, do you want me to write the cap sheet? So you are reading in a percentage or a dollar amount. And I believe that we landed on the dollar amount, which goes to this very same issue. So when I write the cap sheet, just to confirm, I'm going to put it at the board writing at seventy thousand dollars versus putting that percentage in. So we're going to stick to that, that same...
And then we certainly have our change order process that allows us the leeway within administration to be able to do that. And then there's a point at which they need to have, you know, the director of operations, the director of finance, the superintendent, and then if it reaches a certain threshold, the board.
All right. Thanks. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
It's, just if I could, it's really just a protecting, as I mentioned, we have, we haven't agreed exactly on a budget. We both have some differing opinions on what, what do we think the estimate should be. And I think by going through the bid process, we'll iron that out. So this really helps protect us more this first year. If we continue to use RTA in the future, again, I think we'll be in a better position bud, relative to budget, to be within that ten percent. This was really just more than anything to protect both parties and say if there's a large deviation from here, let's go, let's sit down and let's talk through it and make sure. I mean, we prefer the lump-sum fee. I think it gives the, the design professional, he knows, you know, what he can pay, how many hours he can budget for the job, so he can do the work and plan accordingly. When his, when his fee keeps adjusting all the time, it isn't good for everybody because things change too much, and now what people plan for, you know, has to be readjusted, sometimes significantly. But again, I think these are reasonable numbers. And again, it's just a built-in protection in case some things were to swing wildly, which we're not anticipating, but we want to have it in here to protect mostly you guys, but it also protects RTA a little bit, too, if somehow these costs were to really skyrocket. But one of the other benefits to them is they have a great pulse on the industry. We think we'll see better bidder turnout. They can handpick and reach out to certain people that they feel do the best jobs for this. And so we hope that we see an increase in bidders relative to the roofing work by working with a roofing consultant.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Nothing else? So this will be on for...
I ask for it to be on the next meeting for a vote.
Regular agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for being here. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Burton, that concludes building itself.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item six, policy committee, and I will turn the meeting over to Mrs. Frank. Thank you, President Burton. In an effort to keep our policies updated, the administration has been going through and just updating them to keep them relevant and accurate for what we are trying to do as a district. So I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Oquist to take us through some of these board policy updates.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Frank. I'm going to take the first policy, and my colleagues, Dr. Terrell and Mrs. Scott, will take those that are under their purview. So I'd like to first refer you to board policy KC, general public relations and board community relations. This policy has been updated to reflect the practices and the beliefs of the Board of Education with regard to communicating with our community on the condition of the school district. So the first sentence that we'll be adding, you see in red, it is the policy of the Board of Education that the community be regularly informed about the objectives, achievements, value, and condition of the school district. The second sentence will remain, but I'll share it with, with you and with the community. The Board of Education shall promote public confidence in the school district. Board members shall, and then the first two bullets are the same, act in the interest of the entire community, maintain a cooperative working relationship with professional and community groups and others interested in public schools. The third bullet, we have modified the opening phrasing of that and have changed, have modified it to read, communicate to the community result of formal board action. And the last bullet is a new bullet, communicate to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs. So we recommend that this be placed on the board agenda, the regular meeting agenda next week for the first reading, and then we would share that information with the public at that time.
Does anyone have any questions? Comments? Perfect. And we'll move on to EF.
Thank you. Good evening. The first policy I'm bringing forward to you is a policy on accessibility of online content under business management. We recognize the importance of having our digital content on our website accessible to all members of our community. This policy includes and outlines the technical standards we use in determining the accessibility of our online content. We designate a web accessibility coordinator to ensure implementation of the policy. Procedures the district will follow to ensure compliance with these standards, including staff training and grievance procedures for any accessibility concerns. This policy has been reviewed by our district attorney as well as the Office of Civil Rights. I would be more than happy to read the entire policy for you, if that's what you want, Ms. Frank, or, no, okay. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that one.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Just to make everybody aware, this is a new policy.
That is correct. Brand-new policy regarding our district's online content and the accessibility of our online content.
Yes, President Burton.
Mrs. Terrell, or Dr. Terrell, under section D, I have a question on second to the last line. These trainings will include all text and tool tips for images and links. This sounds like it's rather specific, and typically we see that kind of language in administrative procedures. Is that because it's, it's being recommended by the Office of Civil Rights that we put that specific language in our policy?
That is correct, because that is specific policy that they want in there for our individuals in our community, our students and our families, staff with visual impairments. So that, those are two specific tools that the Office of Civil Rights wanted to have in our actual policy, and it's also addressed in our administrative procedures as well.
Okay. So that's not necessarily, I mean, what it looked like to me, especially when it was in parentheses, was the, the name of a specific tool that we, that might change in four or five years to have the same end result. Am I right or wrong, or what's, what are your thoughts? I mean, it's...
So you're asking if it's more of a, like a brand name or a, or an actual software piece?
Exactly.
As opposed to a broad name of a tool itself?
Exactly.
Excel versus Smitsheet.
Right, exactly. Like, are we getting too specific with, with calling it that in its parentheses or not? And if, and if OCR says we do it, then we do it.
Yep.
And I'm fine with that. It's just that it seems, it seems like the language, especially, especially in the parentheses, that it's, that might change in a couple of years, and we would be going back and changing it again. Now, again, if OCR and the attorney says this is the language they want written, then this is the way it's written.
Yes. This has been approved by both our district attorney and the Office of Civil Rights as part of our corrective action plan. So I would recommend moving forward with the language that has been approved.
We just will then.
Thank you.
I will just will then. I mean, it's my self.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And I think online content might have to be changed in a couple of years just because of the fast pace of catching, keeping up with what is next, maybe. And then EF is the administrative procedures. Did you want to go over that or we're good?
Yep. The second policy I am bringing before you is JDAA, which outlines student physical restraint. As you recall, the Michigan State Board of Education adopted the policy for the emergency use of seclusion and restraint on March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. This policy was reviewed by a committee at Wayne Risa, and the policy was adopted by you, the Board of Education, for Livonia Public Schools on August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, which includes the most recent policies and procedures for the emergency use of seclusion and restraint. Therefore, we are requesting the removal of policy JDAA as it is now subsumed under policy JDAAA.
Thank you. Wow. Good job keeping that straight. Yes, yes.
Sounds good.
Any questions on that? Any questions on that one? No, we already approved it. We're going to delete that one. JAA. Right? Is that the next one? Yes.
JAA, yes. I bring you tonight, Board Policy JAA, Equal Educational Opportunities for Students, for the first reading. This was discussed at the study session on January 8th. Board Policy JAA prohibits unlawful discrimination of students. All the content remains the same, the only change is a clarifying statement naming who receives the complaints. It reads as, "The Director of Student Services has appointed the Civil Rights Coordinator Regarding Complaints of Disability, Handicap Discrimination Involving Educational Services, Programs, and Activities. The Director of Human Resources has appointed the Civil Rights Coordinator Regarding All Other Complaints of Discrimination. These individuals are responsible for coordinating the implementation of the school district's obligations." So this clarification is also found in Board Policy GAA, and that was non-discrimination of personnel, and it was adopted on June 6th, 2016. So that same verbiage is put into this one. We recommend that, and the legal reference at the bottom has been changed to Civil Rights Act and Americans with Disabilities Act, and we recommend that Board Policy JAA be put on the agenda for the January 22nd regular board meeting.
Any questions or comments? And JCDBA?
Yes. I also bring forward Board Policy JCDBA prohibiting gang activity. This policy describes the types of activities that may cause fear, intimidation, or destruction in school. The rule against gang activity is included as a prohibited act. All content remains the same. The only change within the policy is the penalty for violation, which would range from warning to expulsion, as it was changed in August 2017 for the Board Policy JD. So we request that the Board Policy JCDBA be put on the agenda for the January 22nd board meeting.
Questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Terrell and Mrs. Scott.
Thank you.
And that concludes policy, President Burton.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item seven, Legislative Committee. Mrs. Jarvis, are there any items tonight?
I have none.
Okay. And Mrs. Oakley, we don't have anything for legislative?
We don't. We are closely watching Senate Bill 574, which we spoke quite a bit about. There was some movement on that today, and so we're monitoring that, that legislation quite closely as its potential impact on the district, but beyond that, nothing to report.
Okay. And the next item on our agenda is item eight, Personnel Committee. Mr. Centers?
No.
Okay. All right. That brings us to the end of our, of our committee of the whole agenda, and we will be going into special meeting, so if you can bear with us for a moment while we get Fairly ready, folks? All righty. We have officially ended our committee of the whole meeting, and we are now beginning our special meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of January 16th, 2018. This is our 7:30 meeting to distinguish it from our 6:15 special meeting, which we also held this evening. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Here.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes, here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Centers is here, President Burton.
Here. We have a quorum. The next item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. I do not see any members of our audience with us at this point of the evening. I assume there's no one in the room who'd like to protect his face? Even behind me? Doesn't look like it. The next item on our agenda is item three, recess to close session for superintendent evaluation. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Frank.
Moves that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District recessed a closed session for the purpose of the superintendent's evaluation.
Mr. Burton.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments on this item before, from the board members? For the benefit of the public, we will be going into closed session. That means we will be off camera for the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. We do not expect to be coming back out on camera. This, again, is a mid-year evaluation, and our complete evaluation is done at the end of the year, typically in June, at which point we would be reporting out on that. Correct? Not correct. Sorry, I misspoke.
I'm not going to clarify.
Yes, Mrs. Oakley, would you please clarify that?
Yes, that's okay. It was, it was a transition that we made, and so folks may recall we, that we went through this process in June, which was actually a mid-year evaluation, because we went through training last year on the new evaluation tool from the Michigan Association of School Boards, and the guidance we received at that time was a recommendation that the district move to a January to December cycle, in which case the final evaluation would be done in January. And so we did report out in June, because it was required to do so within a year, within a year's timeframe. That was actually the mid-year evaluation. So this is considered the final evaluation, we'll reestablish our goals, and then we won't, we will have a, a mid-year check-in with the board in June, and then the formal evaluation next January. So we had to transition through that cycle, and so two within a year's period will be reported out, and then from that point on, it will be reported out at a regular board meeting just once a year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we will still be going into closed session this evening, and we will not be coming out on camera again at the end of the, at the end of that meeting, because we will not be taking any action tonight. Any further action will be at the next coming board meeting. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role? We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.